Is available to any citizen of the town of Gray that wants to use it for almost any reason that they want to use it at all. So if you have programming that you'd like to have broadcast, if you have an opinion that you'd like to have broadcast, or special interest or hobby, don't be afraid to use Gray Community Television Channel 2. And you can go to the town's website, click on GCTV and all the information that you need is there. Now, roll call. Brad Fogg, present. Georgia Woodbury is excused. Derek Shirley?
Present.
Anthony Greivars?
Present.
Our first order of business is minutes of the zoning board of appeals for October 23rd, 2024. Is there a motion?
Derek Shirley, I motion to approve the zoning board of appeals regular meeting.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion, corrections, or notations? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Our second order of business is new business, a public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight scheduled for John C. Davis, who was requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a 50-foot required front setback down to 34 feet, and a 15-foot required side setback down to nine feet in order to rebuild the structure located on their property at 8 Edgewater Road. This is my favorite part. Gray tax map, 048-302-025-000 in a lake zoning district. Is there anybody here to represent the applicant? Would you step up to the podium, please, and tell us your name?
Hi, I'm John Davis.
Okay, Mr. Davis, you submitted an application. We'd like to review that application with us, with you, or tell us more about the application. So we'll get down through this step by step.
Okay.
And after we go through the criteria established, we'll have a motion and a second on each one, and vote on each one independently. And then we'll go to the main motion and vote on that.
Yes.
So would you please tell us why you think the property is unique, or what the unique circumstances of the property are, and not the general condition that would require this variance?
The size of my building width-wise is 26 feet. That's there now, and I cannot meet my side setbacks because of the size of my lot and the size of the building. And also, where my existing building is now, it's 34 feet off the road, off my front line, and I can't push it back any further because I won't meet it in the back.
What's behind you?
There's another road and my septic system's going back in back of me, so...
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No, that's not... Looking at the diagram you submitted, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Is the purple the existing structure, correct?
Yes.
It appears that the existing structure is closer to the side property line than the new one would be. Is that correct?
That is correct, except that on the front corner near the Edgewater Road towards the bottom, I talked to and about her, Ann Cobb and her two sons, and they were asking me if I could leave the front corner where it was because it doesn't line up. The building just will look odd to Ann sitting where it is.
So your abutter's asking you...
Asking me not to move the front.
Not to do what's written on here?
Yes.
So significant, not significantly, with the existing diagram that you submitted, the left, lower left...
Yes.
...front corner...
Yes.
...would be moved back?
It would actually be where the house is, the camp is now. So they asked me to leave that corner there.
So under the proposed... Side setback, Tammy, is that the side setback?
Yeah.
So the proposed, the existing side setback is 15 feet now?
Yes, it would be...
And you want the proposed side setback to be 15 feet?
That's the way it's drawn now. They're asking me to keep it at 12.
I don't see anything on your application that says anything's at 12 feet.
That's what it is. That's the measurement from that corner to my line now is 12 feet. And I just, we just discussed this last Sunday.
Yeah, he does not, it's not shown on his plan graphic.
Okay.
The 15 feet shows a proposed location, moving it three feet in the opposite direction.
Right.
So his existing, he doesn't show his existing side setback on here, which is 12 feet.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
On his application, okay, it has the current side setback requirement is 15 feet. I don't see anything on here that says 12 feet anywhere. Help me out.
Yeah, see where you're saying?
Do you see 12 feet anywhere?
No. No, it's, no, I don't see 12 feet anywhere. But it seems like it's on my standard. This just happened on Sunday. So after this submitted, it seems like, if I understand correctly...
So which corner is she asking to be 12?
Actually, both of these.
So she wants 12 and 12 on each side?
Yes.
Does she want this building squared off?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what the abutter's asking for, is the current building right now is... The proposed building that they're showing is not parallel to the lot lines. Her abutter's asking them to keep this proportionate and basically move it so that it's parallel to the lot lines. Does anybody...
So instead of kitty-cornering?
Yeah, I can show each one of you if you'd like, if you'd like me to.
If, if the top left corner on the drawing is corner A, or the green, I want to use the green, okay?
Near the nine foot.
Okay, I'm gonna call that letter A. The top right corner, letter B. The bottom right, letter C. And the bottom left, letter D. What we're looking at now is an amended application. So the corner D and corner C are requesting to be at 12 feet side setback each. So the lower side, the entire lower side, 12 feet from the property line?
So that makes it 12 feet all the way around?
So letter D and letter C would be 12 feet from the property line?
Yeah, I was just making sure that we had the right.
So the side setback, 12 feet amended. We go proposed here, 12?
The 12, right, okay.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I'm catching up to. So where it's nine, it's 12.
And the other side setback, the other setback, or setback described, the front west corner, is that letter D? I'm not really, I'm not, I don't see a compass here, so...
I'm talking about that one.
Yeah, it's just...
Yes. Let me make it simple. Is the top of the map up here, is that north?
Oh, he's looking at it like this.
Oh, yeah, see, let me make sure that you're looking at it on the right.
I mean, I just, I don't see a compass on here for orientation purposes.
I'm looking at it.
Is this, is this north?
You'd have to ask him.
Which, which one's the north side? I mean, you know, to make changes or something.
This, this would be the north side.
Okay, so this is north and this is south?
Yeah.
The top of the map is south. Okay, so that's south, that's north, that's east, and that's west.
This would be north.
Yeah.
From the west corner. So it would be the front east corner? As 16 feet. And you want the front east corner, and that's the one that the, I mean, holding the map like this.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at the front east corner as this one up here.
Yeah, so you're looking for 12, correct?
What does he want that, what?
12.
He wants that to be 12.
Yes.
And should, can we correct that on the application? Under other setback described, front east corner is 12, or?
Yeah, I think that you can change what you grant him. I mean, we haven't, he's applying for a variance. You haven't granted him anything yet.
Well, I understand that, but I want to, I want to put the numbers down so I can orient myself to the map and understand where is where.
All right. So are you asking if you can change the numbers on the application?
Are you amending the application so that that would be 12 feet?
Sure.
Okay, because whatever we read into the motion, we're gonna use this as our guide.
Yep.
Okay, so the front east corner currently existing is six feet, and you want that to be 12 feet?
It's showing, isn't it? If it's... Is it this one right here?
Yes.
That's nine feet.
That's this, oh, is that a nine? Yeah, I guess it is. I apologize. You want that to be how many feet?
12.
12.
12.
12.
Okay, so it says... Again, looking at the application, third row down, side setback, rear east corner currently is nine feet?
Have to get the application.
I see a six feet there.
Yeah. I'm seeing this. South, this would be east. That would be west. Right? So my front east one is, it's the rear east corner. That's the west, front west.
Okay. Do you want to just explain that to him? Because I don't know if you showed him where your north was.
So the way you're looking at it?
Well, I think all three of us want to look at it the same way.
This is south, so this would be east.
Okay, so we got this all backwards now. And this is east?
No, east is over there.
East is, well...
West would be, this is north.
So the rear east corner is?
Six feet.
Six feet, okay.
That's what's on there and that.
And you want that rear corner, east corner, to be?
No.
Nine or 12?
No. This is what I'm looking for. They don't care, they didn't want me to move the back. They just want me to, we put this back where it was, or is right now.
Okay. And this is the west, front west corner, front lower west corner?
Lower west or south.
Which is currently 15 feet proposed.
Yes.
And you want, it's not, it's not, what is it, it's, what is this distance now? What do they want it to be?
They want it to stay where it is, and it's 12. The existing is 12 now. This, the proposed is 15.
Okay, so you want that to be 12 feet?
Yes.
That's gonna stay nine. This is gonna stay 12. The front west corner is currently 15 feet, not 16 feet. And the rear corner is six.
Right now, it's six, and you want it?
And you want it to be nine?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the six and nines is what got us in the lack of key.
Northeast, south, and west, it held you.
Yes, no, right. All right. Guard barons.
This is my right, this is my left. No, that's as you look at it. Okay. Now that we have that squared away, I'm not, I have to admit, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, so would you, does anybody have any comments they want to make on, on what we just discussed from the public? Okay. Letter B is the granting of the variance will not...
I think someone does.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Step on up.
You leaned in too much.
Dan Cobb, and I'm here with my brother John. We're representing my mother Ann, who we met with John this weekend. We're happy with what he's doing, and as he stated, we just asked that that front corner be rotated back so the building is more in line with the side property lines. I guess my question is, I'm not sure what you all landed on there with all that discussion.
Well, I think that's what we came to.
At some point, we'd like to see the map to make sure you get it right.
Thank you very much. Letter, letter B, Mr. Davis, is the granting will not give undesirable change in the neighborhood. I'm not familiar with the neighborhood. Would you tell us a little bit about the neighborhood, or can somebody fill us in a little bit about the neighborhood? Will this change the appearance?
It, it won't change the appearance. In fact, it'll make it a lot better. My camp is almost 100 years old, and it needs a lot of repairs. So I'd rather tear it down, build new, and get it up to code. And it's a bunch of camps that people are turning in year-round now. There's must be 10 or 15 year-round places down there. But nobody's, not all of them stay year-round. They stay for the summer. But it's a, it's a place that's improving. The people take pride in what they have. They're improving everything down there. So I just want to help and do my part.
Are there trees around? Is there tree growth? Is it, I mean?
There's some old growth trees. There's a whole bunch of trees that probably should be taken down because they're too big to be in the neighborhood. And a couple of them are leaning terribly. But there are some old growth and some new stuff coming up. Neighbors are planting flowers and bushes and trying to keep the place looking nice.
Will, will this reconstruction have any impact on that other, you know, I mean, no trees taken down? I mean, the neighborhood will pretty much stay the way it is, or?
I have to take down some trees on my property because I'm putting in a new septic system. So I have to, but I, once I take them down, I'm gonna replace them as I can. Ann Cobb, as I've asked her if I could remove one of her trees because it's overhanging my power lines. And she said yes, but she would like me to replace it. And I said I'd replace it with whatever she wanted to, so...
As long as it doesn't overhang the power lines.
Right, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. The most difficult one of these, Mr. Davis, is the practical difficulty is not the result of the action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner. Have you done anything to the property, or was it like this, or is it just age, or?
It's just age. I mean, it's not sitting on a foundation. It's sitting on pretty much boards that are sitting on top of rocks. So it's not a, a good situation there. Above my windows and doors, I have no headers. I'm looking at two-by-threes for my rafters. So it's a building that really isn't anywhere near code. And I just, it's, I'd rather tear it down, build something new that would be a lot better than trying to piece that together.
Is there, is there any other, like, feasible alternative to what you want to do?
Nothing I know of. Right now, it's a one-bedroom camp, and, and it's all at a level B right now. I'd like to make it something that looks nice, and the neighborhood would like to have.
In your opinion, is it safe to limit, not meeting code?
And maybe in three years it won't be because I've got to get under there and replace some of the timbers that are actually holding it up. So short of tearing, you know, getting under there, lifting it up, and putting a new foundation, which won't help me much.
Okay. And if we grant the variance... And if we grant the variance, you're not going to unreasonably affect or impact the natural environment around, around the camp?
No.
And is, again, not being familiar with it, and being Edgewater Road, but this is not inside the Shoreland zoning?
No, it's not.
Okay, now help me out. I should've probably gone and looked. Where is Edgewater Drive?
If you go down Campbell Shaw Road, and you turn on Latimer Road, there's a fork in the road, Latimer, Edgewater would be the left-hand fork.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment from anybody? Mr. Cobb?
I just wanna say, you know, we have no issue with what he's doing. If you are looking to grant it, I would like to see on the map what you're going to motion, because I wasn't following all the discussion about the numbers. I wanna make sure you get it right.
Okay.
That's my only request.
Okay.
But we're happy with what he's doing.
Do you wanna step up, or I'll show you now while you're right here?
Sure.
We'll try to show you what we've got. What we've adjusted this, to leave this corner.
So this is the one that we're...
No, we're gonna, we're looking at this one down here. This is the property line, squared up.
We're interested in that.
Corner, okay, what's that say?
So he requested nine.
And he's...
So you want this squared right here.
What we're doing is we're shifting the building, so this, this will naturally shift when we reduce this to say, this is gonna be, that's sixteen feet there, is it?
Fifteen.
This will be twelve feet, so this is changing by three feet this way from the drawing.
That's gonna go from nine to twelve.
Twelve, yes.
That's the corner that where my mother is interested in. Great.
Okay.
And you're gonna leave that at fifteen, and that's fine with us?
Well, the whole, the whole thing will, however.
Is that, because you wanted fifteen, right? So, yeah, the, the only corner she was interested in was this, to get it more in line.
Parallel with the property line.
Parallel with the property line, which her structure is parallel.
Okay.
And the one over here is not, so John would split the difference between the two, so sort of like that, like that, and like that.
Okay. I'll try to, we'll try to get those measurements correct in the, in the main motion. So proposed nine feet. That's twelve. That's six feet. I'm confused again. Okay. Fogg makes the motion that the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property, and not to the general condition of the neighborhood. Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Somebody wanna tackle the next one?
Anthony Grabas' motion is the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of abutting properties.
Is there a second?
Derek Shirley, I'll, I'll second that.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Third one?
The practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or prior owner.
Okay, motion by Shirley, is there a second?
Anthony Grabas' seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. I would, I would motion that no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the petitioner. Is there a second?
I second.
And I, and I say that, I wanna clarify this, I say that for this and a couple of the others, is the property is in fact, there's no foundation there, it's an old rock type platform that the camp sits upon, doesn't allow for modern conveniences to be installed without this, without the reconstruction, and it certainly doesn't impact negatively the neighborhood, but enhances the property itself, and I'm not a tax assessor, but more than likely will please the local tax assessor the next time an assessment is made. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Next one?
I motion the granting of a variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment.
Okay, motion by Grabas, is there a second?
Derek Shirley, seconds.
And I think we need to let people know that Mr. Davis has testified that there'll be no massive taking of trees, except those that are absolutely necessary for the safety of the structure and the safety of power lines that run across and near the property. All those in favor? Unanimous. I would make the motion that the property is out of the Shoreland zoning district. Is there a second?
I second.
Fogg's motions, Grabas' seconds. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, I want you to check my numbers as I read this, okay? I would make the motion that John C. Davis is granted a practical difficulty from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a fifty-foot required front setback down to thirty-four feet, and a fifteen-foot required setback down to nine feet on the east corner. And...
That's not correct.
Or is the, is the six feet staying? Because he has existing six feet, proposed nine feet.
You're gonna want this squared off?
Fine, I understand that.
Twelve, twelve, twelve and twelve.
No, that's all they just said at all. They're, they're just more worried about the front being squared off.
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're nine feet and twelve. Okay, so I thought. I'll start that motion again.
We'll get there.
I move that John C. Davis is requesting a practical difficulty, or that John Davis be granted a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a fifty-foot required setback down to thirty-four feet, and a fifteen-foot required side setback down to nine feet on the east corner, and a twelve-foot setback on the front west corner in order to rebuild the structure located on their property at eight Edgewater Road, gray tax map zero four eight three zero two zero two five zero 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 in a lake zoning district. Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any comment from the public? Any at all? We do have one written comment from a Robert Davis and Judy K. Davis. Do we know if there are butters?
They are not. They're just neighbors.
Okay, they're just, so they live in the neighborhood?
Yes, they do.
Okay, that's good. Which reads, "Thank you for information about the new home John Davis is planning. Judy and I have known John for many years and have seen his new home plans. We are in favor of the changes in order to build his home, and are happy to have another year-round family in our neighborhood." Okay. On the main motion, all those in granting the motion. It's unanimous. Sometime in the next seven days, the Code Enforcement Office will prepare the variance, the granting of the variance document. I'll sign that, and we'll get it to you by, I think, next Wednesday. Or they may call you to come and pick it up, but it should be ready for Wednesday.
Great.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business before the Zoning Board of Appeals? And the old business before the Zoning Board of Appeals? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Derek Shirley, I motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Can you ever say no, you don't wanna adjourn? I'm, I'm staying here.
Well, you know, we've always invoked Robb's rules of order, no objection, it's adjourned.
Ah, jeez.
That's a, you know, I could use that every time. Well, I'm glad we got the clause established. He took it off the sound of the broadcast.